Good evening, everybody. We do the agenda review session for Wednesday, May 20, 2015. We have ordinances on second reading, 501. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Code 15, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.04, Uniform Construction Code. 502. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Code 5, Chapter 5.32, Charitable Solicitations in Chapter 5.96, Solicitors and Canvassers. 503. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Code 9, Chapter 9.04, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency. 504. I'm sorry. Ordnance for discussion on first reading, 504. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicapped Persons and Schedule 29, Time-Limited Parking. Add two handicap parking zones at 260 Concealment Street and 6 Rutgers Street. Add one time-limited parking area on Somerset Street. 505. Held with the request of the Administrator. 506. Amend the management salary ordinance. We have Resolutions. Resolutions 558, Proagreement of Amendment, 59, Pro Payroll, 60. Authorized Refund and Redeem Tax Sales Agreement, 61. Pro First and Person and Place to Place Transfer Liquor License, Liquor License Number 1214-33015-004, From George Baroud, Dillinger, Baroud LLC, 338 George Street. 562. Held with the request of the City Attorney.
And Mr. Council President, that is the result of the adjournment of the hearing on the discipline of the authorities against the Palace, came at the request of the Council of the Palace. So that matter will be the ultimate next meeting appearance of the new schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Shannby. 563. Pro rejections of work contract to be determined for reconstruction of Recreation Park, specification number 851-14R, not to exceed to be determined. 564. Pro rejections of work contract to be determined for furniture delivered, 1, 35 unit yard rear mower or low entry rig construction, specification number 421-14P, not to exceed as to be determined. 5. Authorized shared service agreement with the City of New Brunswick and the county of New Brunswick. In the County Bill 6 for 2015, operation of two shuttle buses, not to exceed 128,958. 566. Pro amendment of Resolution R 041547, the reason is to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,002.72 to Midster and Midster. For Police Officer Andrew Weiss, in the matter of Ron Reavis versus Police Officer Andrew Weiss, from $11,002.38 to $12,510. 567. Pro resolution for the New Brunswick Police Department's continued participation in the US Department of Defense, 1033 program for receipt of surplus equipment. 68. Authorized tax equipment to transfer overpayments on several tax and utility accounts. 69. Pro amendment of Resolution R 051492, extend contract to one additional year, beginning June 1st, 2015 and ending May 31st, 2016, for insurance brokerage services and dental services, Northeastern Benefit Services LLC. 570. Pro request for use of city walk sidewalks requested by three annual ministries, lifting, molding, for preaching to passersby utilizing Bullhorn, location of Burger Court and Sample Road, dates of Saturday, 2/20 through 27, July 4th, and last 18th through 25, 2015. Location will quit happening in the right place, dates of Saturday, August 1st, 8:15 to 22nd, 29th, 2015. 571. Pro reward contract with Major's New World Engineering Incorporated for construction inspection services, reconstruction of Recreation Park project, specification number 878-15RIP, not to exceed $95,200.
Mr. Council President, if I could just interrupt you, sir. If we don't act on the award of bid on Recreation Park, we're going to use the whole fat line on 14.
Got it. One has to do with the other.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Thank you. 572. Pro reward of contract with S. Batata Construction Incorporated for New Street Roadways Sidewalk Repair, Project Phase 2, specification number 883-15, not to exceed $68,600. 573. Pro reward contract with Delayed Contracting Incorporated for Railroad Avenue Pump Station Improvements, specification number 846-14R, not to exceed 392,974. 574. Pro reward of contract with Hatch Spot McDonald Hallas Incorporated, doing business as Hatch Spot McDonald LLC. Construction phase administrative, administration services for DNR Canal and Westin's Mill Raw Water Pump Station upgrade for the water utility, specification number 434-15RIP, not to exceed $99,500, fair and open. 575. Pro amendment of Resolution R 101, 459, change order number 1, credit, with MTV Contracting LLC. Reason of conducts for the cost to repair the security alarm requires damage story construction for the Henry Guest House roof replacement, specification number 853-14, the credit is 426.50. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase in 20% or more of the original contract. 576. Pro amendment of Resolution R 031, 538, change order number 3-D, with Kristic Romaneky, doing business as K.R. Masonary for Repson Avenue Fire Benzema Community Center, amount of $3,379.20. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 577. Pro amendment of Resolution R 0414, 041546, to pay additional legal fees in the amount of $2,076 to Midster and Midster. Police Officer Brad Riddell, in the matter of the first officer Brad Riddell, from $22,993.25 to $25,069.25. 578. Pro amendment of Resolution R 101162, the reason is change in appropriation of funds, pro reward contract with Hatch Spot McDonald, Regenerating Design Services for the DNR Canal, Westin's Mill Raw Water Pump Station, not to exceed $255,500. 579. Pro relaxation of the City Neighbors令, requested by Sky High Records and Equipment. Reason is a voice HVAC equipment at 14 Timberland Road, date Saturday, May 9, 2015, at time of 7:00 AM, 3 PM, not quoted up. 580. Pro amendment of Resolution R 021545, change order number 1, with rock solid construction for Charles Street Water and Sewer Main Relocations, specification numbers 869-14, the amount is $1,188.92.72. Approval of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% or more of the original contract. 581. Pro amendment of Resolution R 101334, with Suburban Consulting Engineers Incorporated for supplemental services for professional engineering services for the relocation of water and sewer mains on Charles Street, specification number is 835-13RFP-R, not to exceed $36,643.13. 582. Pro reward contract with Foreign State Malocores Incorporated for 2015 Malocore Analysis for the Wording Toes, 12-month period commencing May 21, 2015 and heading May 20, 2016, specification number 426-15RFP, not to exceed $12,000, fair and open. 583. Pro off-premise trappings merchandise at Boyd Park for the Bee's Foundation Incorporated, dated September 27, 2015. 584. Held with the request of the City Clerk. 585. Resolution to authorize settlement of a matter entitled Delayed Contracting Incorporated for the City of New Brunswick versus Chewing Gatsman Incorporated, the authorized agent due to delay contracting the port lane. 586. Send here date relative to continuation, termination of conditions on ABC license for Kelly's Corn Incorporated, trading as Kelly's Corn, liquor license number 1214-33028-006, dated June 3, 2015. The Gala Cafe and Restaurant Incorporated, trading at the Gala Cafe and Restaurant, liquor license number 1214-33007, dated June 3, 2015. For Persuade Incorporated, trading as Meat Terra Bar, liquor license number 1214-33047-005, dated June 17, 2015. For La Famosa Incorporated, trading as La Famosa, liquor license number 1214-33045-003, dated June 17, 2015. For Platinum Lounge LLC, trading as Pearl and Glove, liquor license number 1214-3307908, dated June 17, 2015.
Mr. Council President, just for purposes of clarification, your times on all these hearings will be at the council meeting, which is 5:30.
Correct. I was going to make that announcement, sir. People realize that our next meeting, starting after Memorial Day, our meetings will start at 5:30, 5:30 PM. So please be aware that our next meeting, which will be Wednesday, June 3, 2015, is 5:30 PM. Thank you. We'll call, now we'll call the meeting to order. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Clerk, based on appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and have been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for all our men and women in our armed forces who have lost their lives through battle. Thank you. We have minutes from April 15, 2015. Can I get a motion on minutes?
Motion.
Second.
I'll call them.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. I want to speak on, first I gave you about the time difference. I also want to speak real quick. Last meeting was asked by a member of the public about the budget on the police, on if there's going to be encryption. I believe Mr. Cradwell answered that question. And I said I was in favor of, I had no problem with it, but I was informed after the meeting or the next day from the people at the police that they will, it will be in about a year or so, they're going to follow what the state police and Rutgers police have been doing, and that it will be eventually, our police radio will be encrypted. So I just wanted to get that out there. I didn't know that, obviously, and I was informed that that's the way, that's what the direction that the police are taking. We have a public hearing. Can I, Mr. Shannby?
Mr. Council President, as I advised during the agenda session, a request from the licensing attorney, Mr. Gus, has requested that the public hearing on the charges against the Palace be carried to the next meeting. I would just ask for a motion.
Excuse me one second. Can I get somebody to please shut the doors there or something? Thank you, Mr. Shannby. I'm sorry, Mr. Shannby.
I would just ask for a motion to carry the public hearing on the Palace door matter to the next meeting, which is due June 30.
Can I get a motion from somebody?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have the issue with the Recreation Park. Is anybody from either party here tonight on Recreation Park?
Mr. Landigan, one of the bidders, asked if he could carry, he would have been here tonight, but he won your own father's birthday.
Okay.
He's the bachelor of the person who missed.
Okay? Can we get him up?
Just for purposes of council being advised as to the history, last meeting we had a public hearing on the bid protest. Council thereafter ran into pro session with discussion regarding this particular award which was made. The council directed the law department to infer the research into the issues that were raised. I understand that the council wanted to question the low bidder and the second lowest bidder, who is the ejector here this evening. I don't see either party here, so perhaps if we do, and it's the council's pleasure, we would want to adjourn this to the next scheduled meeting.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We also have another hearing that we had at the last meeting regarding the furniture delivered, 130 unit yard refuse truck. Is anybody here this evening on any one of those parties? Yes. Are you all together?
Yeah. You got the refuse truck?
Yes. All four, you're the same, same. Okay. Go, Mr. Shannby.
Mr. Council President, I'm not quite sure if they're together. I think that the parties here represent the low bidder and then the ejector, who's the second lowest bidder. Is someone here from Foley?
Yes.
Yeah. And there's someone here from sanitation.
Okay. So we've got both parties here.
Both parties, okay.
Wait a minute. That doesn't really cover the parties. McNeilis is really there as the other party.
Right. It's the sub of Foley.
Right.
But they're represented by Foley, so to speak.
Okay.
But also, like the prior matter, we had a big hearing at the last council meeting, as the council is aware, we also discussed the issues raised at that time at, in the closed session. I know that the council wanted the law department to do a little more research into some of the issues raised. To my understanding, Mr. Hamilton has caused that research to be done and is prepared to report to the council on his findings relative to the issue of American-made goods that is raised by the low bidder regarding the protester's location of production.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton?
It was conceded by the low bidder that a part of the vehicle was either manufactured or assembled in Mexico, which is contrary to the specification and contrary to state law. This is a suggestion, perhaps oblique, that the same was true of the vehicles. And we did some research on that, which decided that the resolution appears that the police is going to be doing some work in Mexico, but it's on different kinds of vehicles. It's not on the 32-yard truck, it's on a smaller vehicle.
So you're saying the truck that is specked out from McNeilis is 100% made in America?
That's what they have represented as. There's no evidence in the contract.
And the low bidder, some part of the truck is, some of it is assembled in Mexico.
Yes.
Anything else, sir? Mr. Shannby?
With that report to the council and based upon the American-made product provision that's in the bid specifications, we are recommendation that the low bidder's bid be rejected and as the second lowest bidder be awarded the contract. And the council is still applying vote to see the fair resolution to that effect.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Would you like to comment?
Yes, you may just say it.
You are, sir? Hold on. Come up to the microphone, name and address, sir, and who you represent.
My name is Marino Ironetti. I represent sanitation equipment. I'm the president.
Yeah.
As far as that American-made, everything on the leash is made in the USA, and it's assembled in Mexico. Now, McNeilis is building a $100 million plan to manufacture parts for the McNeilis realtor. They started that in October of 214.
Sir, you didn't hear what the city attorney said. He said the truck that's specified in the bid is 100% made in America.
The truck. I don't talk about the body.
We're talking about the, go ahead, Mr. Downey.
The body.
The body of the truck is all made in America.
Same thing with the leash. The only thing, it's assembled in Mexico.
According to our research, there's a part that's made in Mexico and it's assembled in Mexico that's against state statute, according to our attorneys.
I'm sure everyone in this room has clothes, 75% is made out of the country. So what does that mean? We're not supposed to wear clothes?
What it means, sir, is, I didn't say that. I said, you have a state law. The attorney just said it's a state law that the truck, to your bid documents. Did you read the bid documents?
Yes, of course. I made the bid document.
So if you, why would you present something that's made, that was assembled in Mexico?
Every vehicle in this country is.
Not according to Foley, the truck that you're presenting is, you know, it is.
I'm furnishing it. They're a truck.
I'm furnishing, we're furnishing the body. He's furnishing the chassis.
We're just furnishing the body, but the truck chassis is from Foley.
Go ahead.
Both the truck and chassis and the compactor back is, I don't know, the technical term off the top of my head, which you call the back of a garbage truck. That's what we've been talking about, the loader.
Right.
We are talking about the truck and the chassis, there's no distinction as to that. The issue that came up with respect to this bid was the actual compactor of the back of the garbage truck. Okay? That was the issue. And our research and information to date, though the gentleman has presented documentation saying that the other bidder will be making these in Mexico, our research to date indicates that the 32 cubic yard model, which the specification calls for, is going to be fully made and assembled in the USA, and that would comply with the bid specifications.
You know, they're furnishing you a camera. The camera's made in China.
Pro to chair, sir. Do you want me to say?
The camera on the McNeilis comes from China, so that whole, that truck isn't totally American. So you're saying going forward, the city of New Brunswick will not buy anything that isn't made in America? How can you do that?
Sir, I'm saying according to this specification for this bid, we're not saying, we're not saying that, we're talking about this specific bid right here. We're not talking about everything.
Yeah, but then it's not.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Don't, don't, you can't yell out like that. Could somebody shut the door, please?
That's a violation of the law.
What is? Shut the door? Who yelled that out? You yelled that out? Why is that a violation of the law?
Public meetings actually can't.
I mean, I can't hear.
Public meetings would cause.
I mean, that's the word technical. All right, sir. Please don't, no one speak out anymore, please. We're all trying to have a sane meeting here. Relax. But I just can't hear. That's the only reason why. I'm sorry. The baby's screaming. I mean, I don't know what to say. Sir, that's not what we're saying. Our attorney was saying, according to this bid and this specific document, the loader of the back of that vehicle is assembled in Mexico, and you're saying that's against the state statute, state law. That's our attorney's opinion. That's what they're, that's what they're telling us. Anybody else like to comment on this specific? Anyone else?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
If you could just clarify this for me. It says mainly the USA was, or they have to be made and assembled in the USA, or just made in the USA for the assembly somewhere, so what do you say?
It's supposed to be assembled in the USA, made in the USA. Those are the specifications.
Thank you.
Seeing anybody, would I entertain a motion to accept the council's proposal?
No, you've got it later on.
Okay. We can put it in the.
Put it in the pack.
Okay.
And out, resolutions in that form.
Okay. We have ordinances on second reading, ordinance 501. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Code 15, Buildings and Construction, Chapter 15.04, Uniform Construction Code. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular order? Yes, sir. Mr. Cradwell.
Good evening, Charles Cradwell, New Brunswick. Can you just tell me what the purpose of the ordinance is? Is it an increase in fees?
Well, I, we have Mr. Krug here, I know, and it does, in several areas, increase the fees that are charged for permitting. I believe there's some new classifications to make consistent with the Uniform Construction Code, but I'm going to call on Mr. Krug if he could give more detail.
Still on the microphone, sir?
Yes, my name is Kenneth Krug. I work in the City of New Brunswick in the construction office. There's a minimal fee increase here with foot, new construction. It went from point, uh... .030 to .032. And per the state regulations, open type structure, such as warehouse, has to be a lower fee than other buildings, so therefore that's the reason for that section on the S1 and S2 warehouse, we let it set to .030, which is less than .032. And some of the other things were just corrections that had to be made to properly enforce Uniform Construction Code regulations.
Thank you.
So I heard it was minimal fee increase. Can you tell me, has it been budgeted for? Is it, we know how much extra money the city is going to make off of the increase? Is it in the budget?
Mr. Lockman?
We did not budget for the change in rates.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else on this particular ordinance, 501? Seeing them?
Second.
I'll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Ordinance 502. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Code 5, Chapter 5.32, charitable solicitations, Chapter 5.96, solicitors and canvassers. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this particular ordinance?
Excuse me, wants to get Charles Cradwell, New Brunswick. I'll get right to the point. Well, what is the purpose of this ordinance?
Mr. Shannby?
This particular ordinance, we're talking about, the first one that consolidates the existing ordinances that are on the city books regarding charitable solicitors and solicitors and canvassers, and combines those particular sections into one section, the first instance. In the second instance, it creates a procedure whereby people can conduct soliciting in the city of New Brunswick. This particular ordinance, as well as the next one, is in conjunction with the city's reaction to the lawsuit, which I'm sure the council will recall involving the Coalition for the Homeless against the city. What this ordinance does, it carves out specific exemptions for charitable entities that do not have to comply with the ordinance. It specifically states that this ordinance, as well as the prior provisions, do not apply to someone who's asking for donations for him or herself, panhandling, as it was commonly referred to. So this particular ordinance kind of consolidates the two older ordinances and directs how someone could get a solicitor's permit.
Thank you.
So there's been a settlement agreement between the city and the parties that prevailed the suit, the people who sued. Can you tell me the conditions of that settlement agreement? Is it a requirement that the city adopt new legislation, or is it a requirement that they introduce new legislation?
Mr. Shannby?
It's a requirement that they amend the existing ordinances and that they not enforce those that previously existed. And that's exactly what this is. These are amendments to existing ordinances, which we agreed to do as a result of the litigation.
Thank you.
But just to be clear, if the council were to vote it down, you'd still be in agreement, full agreement with the settlement. Repealing the existing ordinances has already been done, that was the important action. Passing new ones is up to the city when and if they do that at this point. Is that correct?
No, actually, this ordinance does both. This repeals the old ordinance and adopts a new one. And under our stipulation of settlement, that is to be done in 90 days from the date of the settlement, which we're inside that timeframe at this point. So yes and no. Yes, we have to do it.
So the existing ordinances have not technically been repealed, they're just not being enforced?
Correct. Pursuant to the court order agreed to with the plaintiffs in that lawsuit.
Right. And so the plaintiffs in this lawsuit, have they been given the opportunity to weigh in on this new ordinance?
It was a meeting here tonight, and we had it, it was read last week, so they had every day opportunity?
Actually, Mr. Council President, if I could add to that, there were numerous discussions There were numerous discussions about their input. Quite frankly, there's no requirement in the settlement that approve our ordinance. And there's no prohibition that they not be part of it. Quite frankly, after the case was settled and during the negotiations to resolve the case, there were no discussions that they wanted to see our ordinance before it was adopted. And as you just mentioned, this is, you know, publicly noticed to the world, so to speak, so.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on the ordinance ordinance?
Yeah, matter of fact, I think you should not pass this. I really am very serious about this. It has not been approved by the folks who sued us once. That lawsuit cost the city taxpayers several thousand dollars. And if, if you had the opportunity to reach out to them directly, I mean, what I heard was numerous discussions about what they thought took place, but they weren't reached out to. Were they reached out to? Were they given an opportunity? Did the city reach out and say, hey, will you sue us if we pass this?
Mr. Shami?
No, I haven't reached out to them and said, here's our ordinance, take a look at it, tell us if you're okay with it. But there were discussions during the resolution of the lawsuit whereby the plaintiffs' counsel knew very well that I was going to introduce and present to the council for introduction matter, new ordinances. Because that was a requirement of the settlement, that we appeal the old ones and introduce new ones.
And no one contacted you about the new ordinance?
And there was never a request or a condition placed that they look at them and approve them. And quite frankly, if, if I think they had a concern in that regard, they would have reached out to me. And I could represent the council. I hadn't been reached out to by anyone involved in this lawsuit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shami.
If I could ask, yeah, how would they know to reach out? Do they read the whole notice?
Probably advertised.
When they notified this is moving forward?
Well, it was publicly advertised, and they knew, Mr. Shami, they were there when the settlement was reached on. They knew he had ninety days to come up with a new, with a new ordinance. And that's what he did, and nobody's ever, and nobody's reached out to him concerned yet. Anything else on the ordinance, sir?
Yes, it's been testified to that this ordinance and the next are part of a package deal to replace laws. I'd like to point out to the council, these laws that are being replaced were laws that criminalized being poor, criminalized poverty, criminalized people asking friends or asking strangers on the street for donations of food or more money. And that is something that...
Does it probably try to fix it?
Well, I would suggest that you've actually done a very bad thing by adopting these ordinances on first reading. And I'll save my comments on the next one for when the next one is. But I'll tell you that I spoke with a person at the American Civil Liberties Union today. She was part of this lawsuit against the city. They won the lawsuit, and they tell me that they haven't had time to review this particular ordinance. But they told me the other one is absolutely unconstitutional, that there are numerous parts of it that are extreme overreach on the part of the city and will further cause problems for the poor in our city and will likely invite, the word was invite, a lawsuit. This, the woman I spoke to said, this is inviting a lawsuit. So I would urge you not to pass either of these tonight. They've not gotten the endorsement or the approval or even any positive words from the people who sued us the first time. Do not invite another lawsuit. Do not waste our money trying to criminalize people.
Did you tell the person that we're going to be voting on it tonight, that you spoke to on the phone? Did you say what we're doing? Are they here?
I don't know, actually. As a matter of fact, I'd like to point out that this meeting is not really legal. You're hosting, no, you're hosting bid protest.
I don't want you to vote that.
I'll bet you don't. I'll bet you don't.
I don't want you to continue on the ordinance.
This meeting is illegal because you, people who, who you called and said, is anybody here for the bid protest? We wouldn't know that because some people might not be able to get in the room because this room is not big enough for your meeting. This room is uncomfortable for the people that are here. And you are, you are holding an illegal meeting, and quite frankly, you're about to pass an unconstitutional law. And I'm asking you, please, will you not do that? Will you please table this and just repeal the ordinances to comply with this settlement?
No. Do you have anything else on the ordinance, sir?
Why not?
Mr. Cradville, I'm listening to the advice of my counsel here.
He didn't give you any advice to say pass it?
I know he didn't give me any advice.
Did you have a secret meeting with him?
Did I, did I say that? Do you have anything else on the ordinance, sir?
Why not?
Anything else?
Why, why are you passing this?
We're going to vote on it, but see if it passes or not. Okay? Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'd like to continue. I still have time. You're trying to stifle my time. You've lost a lot of respect for myself and the public.
Mr. Cradville, we're going to wound up tonight.
Got that one.
Well, why? What did I do?
You broke your promise to me.
What was your right promise to you?
At the last meeting, you promised that you would not allow the police to encrypt the police scanner and keep citizens soliciting.
So you mean to tell me this is, this is, you're hiddenly mad at me over the encryption, the thing?
You're absolutely, I'm not hiddenly mad. I'm going to talk about it during the meeting.
Mr. Cradville?
Yes.
Let's stick to the ordinance. We're talking about the encryption.
You broke your promise. Did you break your promise?
No, I did not break my promise. I told you I was in favor of it, and I told you that I have no problem with it. Yeah, I know.
I asked if you would make sure that it didn't happen. And you said, for you, yes.
Mr. Cradville.
I will. Did you, did you say that most of the events at the last meeting?
I said those things, okay?
Did you mean them?
Yeah, of course I did want.
You're a man of your word? Are you a man of your word?
I'm going to ask you one more time to talk about the ordinance or not, that we may want to sit down. Okay? You're being pretty disrespectful. Please, have a seat. We're going to vote on the ordinance now.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Shami, is this ordinance taken from anywhere? Did you just make up your head?
This, this particular one, and I'll talk about the second one when we get to it. But this particular one has been modeled after the New Jersey League municipalities, ordinance that they've worked on for many years in other particular towns to try to address issues that Mr. Cradville and others have brought up about unconstitutionality regarding solicitation provisions that were contained in many old ordinances. I will say with all due respect, I don't believe I or anyone in the board department, I would say Mr. Hammett's worked on it as well, would present an ordinance for adoption to this council if he felt that it would be declared unconstitutional. So I'm confident in saying that, and people could sue people all the time over anything, as we all know that. But I wouldn't present it to you if I thought it was going to be a problem.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on ordinance five oh two?
I still have the floor.
Mr. Cradville, don't push your luck, okay? Serious. Do you have, I want you to continue.
Listen.
Continue.
Thank you. This ordinance is likely to be challenged. It's likely to cause taxpayers to have to spend money defending it. And there has been no adequate defense of it. There's no reason that we need to pass this tonight. You simply need to repeal the existing ordinance. I don't see why the council is insisting on continuing to bring about lawsuits. You're inviting a lawsuit. Please do not invite a lawsuit. Do not pass this law and do not pass the next one. They are not constitutional. Your attorney is giving you bad advice, and he lost last time, he will lose again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on five oh two? Seeing none?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming? Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Five oh three, ordinance to amend supplemental revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title nine, Chapter nine point zero four, offenses against public peace and decency. Anybody that can comment on this particular ordinance?
Good evening, members of the council. Charles Cradville from New Brunswick. I want to be as quick as possible with this one, but I just don't think you're passing a law here that is in agreement with what people think is acceptable. You lost the last lawsuit because a person was being given tickets from the police for holding up a sign that said, you know, please, please support me, please give me money, God bless you. And that man was arrested and taken to jail and processed and given tickets. And he challenged them with the help of organizations that actually do good work, like the ACLU and like the New Jersey Coalition to end homelessness. And they sued the city, and they won because you had an unconstitutional law, an indefensible law. I would suggest that this law that you have put forth tonight is unconstitutional. And the American Civil Liberties Union, the largest organization of its kind, a national organization, has said that it is unconstitutional and it invites a lawsuit. And if you pass this, you will likely be sued. I do not think it is fair for you to tell people in this city that they are not allowed to ask anyone for money from one half hour before sunset until one half hour after sunrise. What you're saying to me is if I'm on the streets of New Brunswick, I don't have a home or a place to go, and I've got, you know, three dollars and twenty-five cents, and a sandwich is three dollars and fifty cents, but the sun is about to go down, I can't ask anybody for a quarter until a half hour after the sun rises? You're telling me that I got to wait all night to eat? You're telling me I got to wait all night until morning to ask a fellow human being for a quarter? You're telling me I'm not allowed to solicit anyone at any time of day within twenty-five feet of the entrance to or parking area of any bank, ATM machine, check cashing business, mass transportation facility, mass transportation stop, public restroom, pay telephone, theater, place of public assembly, any outdoor seating area of any cafe, restaurant, or other business? Are you saying that you support this law? That you don't think the poor homeless people in New Brunswick shouldn't be able to solicit their neighbors, their fellow residents in New Brunswick? And you're going to put these onerous restrictions on them? Do you support that? Do you really believe that, Council President? Are you going to pass this law tonight?
Mr. Cradville, this is a comment period, not a question and answer period. Continue with your comments.
Just to point out, you do answer questions all the time. People come up here and ask them, I'm one of them. You answer them. You remember this?
Mr. Shami, would you like to speak more on the ordinance?
If I can. This, this particular ordinance, as I indicated before, is the second part of the ordinance that agreed to amend in connection with the resolution of lawsuits. But this particular ordinance is particularly more interesting because this is a time, place, matter, regulation type of ordinance. And if I could just read from the ordinance quickly, and I want to give to the council and the public a little history. The ordinance clearly states that the city of New Brunswick has a duty to protect the rights of all people to exercise their First Amendment rights safely. The city of New Brunswick has a compelling governmental interest in imposing certain reasonable time, place, and manner regulations whenever potential First Amendment activities such as begging, solicitation, or panhandling occur on streets, highways, sidewalks, walkways, plazas, and other public venues within the city. The ordinance is not intended to limit any person from exercising their constitutional right to solicit funds or depict it or protest. And it goes on, okay? And the reason this particular ordinance is very unique in our point of this ordinance is because this is the exact same ordinance, except for some commas perhaps, and ans in the city of New Brunswick, as an ordinance that was adopted by the city of Worcester in Worcester, Massachusetts. And this particular ordinance was challenged through the federal courts through Massachusetts. And interestingly enough, this particular ordinance was reviewed by the United States Courts of Appeals, the First Circuit, in a case entitled Thayer versus City of Worcester. For those who are into sites, I could provide a site too, which I believe is seventy-five F third sixty. The opinion of the court in that particular case was delivered by an individual judge by the name of Sauer. Justice Sauer was a former U.S. Supreme Court judge who was on recall to the First Circuit to hear this case, okay? And for those of you who may know of Supreme Court justices, he's been known to be one of the more respected and thoughtful individuals. Well, I will report to the council that Justice Sauer upheld this very ordinance for constitutional issues, for issues that Mr. Cradville says are unconstitutional and apparently someone from the ACLU says is unconstitutional. I will tell you that we lawyers try not to reinvent the wheel when we don't have to. And certainly, if we can find something that's been tested and we find that the test has passed, we'll be more than happy enough to go with that particular provision. And I could report to the council, I have a very high level of confidence in this particular ordinance presented to the council for adoption, is evil, that court across the street or perhaps in Norfolk or Trenton will not find it to be unconstitutional. But anything could happen these days. I will tell you, though, that, you know, the Supreme Court of the United States may hear this eventually, and if something should come of it, obviously, we'll look at it. But as of this point in time, the decision was rendered on June nineteen, two thousand fourteen, and it is good law. So that's what I'd like to report to the council as it relates to this particular proposed ordinance on second reading.
Thank you.
Has the city made any effort to track just how much of the city it would be illegal to solicit in? Or what areas or neighborhoods?
Uh, no.
This sounds like all of downtown. This sounds like all of the busy parts of New Brunswick. There's mass transit, ATMs. Can I ask you a question, councilman?
Sure.
Okay. Do you know at any given time whether you're within twenty-five feet of an ATM? If you're walking the streets of New Brunswick? How could you know?
How would you know?
You know where all the ATMs are when you're walking? I know you probably know your neighborhood very well. You probably know New Brunswick very well. But do you know when you're within twenty-five feet of an ATM or not?
Uh, probably not.
Right. Do you know whether you're within twenty-five feet of a public restroom or a payphone at any given time?
Most likely, probably not, Mr. Cradville.
Right, so how would a reasonable person who's trying to solicit to follow the ordinance avoid being prosecuted?
I guess that would be determined by if there was a police officer there and the police officer thought that he was within, at the time, you know, he didn't have to make that distinction at the time of that altercation.
The Council President Biden interjected, the ordinance specifically states that a police officer observing the conduct may request or order such a person to cease and desist. There's not an arrest, automatic arrest. In fact, there's no automatic issuance of the summons, and there is no arrest. It's an issuance of a fifty dollar ticket, what the ordinance reads.
Right, so I can hear the public not, not supporting this. And I would encourage other members of the public who are here to get up and speak after I yield the floor and speak and let it be known if you're against this. Because this is a really bad thing. New Brunswick shouldn't be known for trying to push out poor people who are down on their luck. That's not what my city is going to be about. And I don't think you support the people of this city if you support this law. I think that this law is onerous. This law has not been through the proper tests. The people who sued you last time say it's unconstitutional, and they're going to sue you again. This would be a big failure, almost huge mistake, and send a wrong message. I think that you really need to reconsider what you're doing here. And I would just like to ask, has anything I said changed your mind? Is anybody on the council willing to vote no or to abstain on this?
Would anybody like to ask you, Mr. Cradville? All right, Mr. Cradville.
So you all think this is right? What's going on?
Anything else, sir? On the ordinance? Anything else on the ordinance?
Yes, you're absolutely wrong, and you will be proven wrong in court.
Thank you. Anybody else on the ordinance?
I just, uh...
Who are you, sir?
I'm Anthony Reindino, Dick Street. Just want to respond to Mr. Shami's comment about it just being fifty dollar tickets. It seems clear to me that that comes from a place of privilege. Fifty dollars is not cheap for somebody especially that's living on the street. And what happens then when they can't pay the ticket or they can't make a report? Then there's a warrant for their arrest. And then, you know, they end up in jail. And the whole process continues. That, that's the issue here. So fifty dollars is a big deal because it perpetuates the issue. I don't, I don't see how this is solving the issue. What is the purpose of this, this ordinance? What is the purpose of this ordinance? Is it to stop homelessness? Because it's clearly not going to do that.
Well, as I read before, it's to balance everyone's rights. It's the First Amendment rights, it's the safety. You know, in my research of this ordinance, in New York City, for example, which is a much bigger city than the city of Brunswick, has ordinances like this regulating people coming out into the roadway, whereby they could be hurt by a moving car, whereby someone can cause an accident. He's trying to avoid someone coming out into a roadway to solicit. Those are the types of time, place, and matter regulations that this ordinance and others like it address. We're not talking about a situation where someone is prevented from asking someone for money or not being tended to social services that are available. Nothing in this ordinance is going to deny that. This is clearly an ordinance that protects both the people who may be solicited and those who wanna solicit.
Thank you, sir.
I think, you know, it might not specifically prevent solicitation. The thing is, Mr. Cradville pointed out, it effectively does, given the fact that, you know, these people are soliciting downtown because that's where most of the foot traffic is. As Mr. Cradville pointed out, according to this ordinance, you can't solicit downtown. There's an ATM in almost every other building. There's banks all over the place, there's cafes all over the place. So you are preventing people from soliciting. And as far as blocking the traffic, I mean, I'm pretty sure we already have ordinances to make sure that people don't obstruct traffic. I don't see how this is necessary.
Thank you, sir.
We just spoke about, you know, everybody has been, I know a lot of people have been solicited before and a lot of times we stand up and we'll editorialize about the homelessness. And there's nothing wrong with helping out people who need help. You know, the homeless veterans, somebody who's down on their luck, a person that may be disabled, who doesn't have a job. But then there's another flip side to it, where sometimes you have able-bodied people in front of an ATM. And I wanna know, think of how you feel. You cash your check, you just get off of work, you cash your check. Soon as you step away from the ATM, somebody's standing there. And a lot of stuff, excuse me?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. No outbursts, if you're gonna outburst, you're gonna have to leave the room, all right?
No, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm sorry.
You what?
I work in, excuse me. No, 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 no. I'm trying to get to a point where, I've been a member of my church for twenty years. We fed homeless people, we take homeless people in. A lot of people will talk about homeless people and be empathic and they haven't done anything about it. But a lot of us, you can't say that we don't empathize with homeless people. But, you know, we say we feel sorry for them. But then we have to also get them to a point where, you know, your old addict says, "Give a man a fish, you feed him for a day. Teach a man a fish, you feed him for life." So there comes a point where we have people standing out and they are able-bodied people. I have one that's near me, I have a few people, able-bodied people near me. You know, I'll take you and give you a sandwich. I'll take you and get you some food. But I've seen people, you give them money, it's one person, he buys cigarettes. He goes out and gets anything but use the money for things that are not, that's not, that they don't need at that point. So yes, I do feel empathetic towards them. We're not trying to criminalize the poor people. That's, okay, whatever, you wanna add to it, like I said, my actions speak for itself. We're not trying to criminalize homeless people at any point. My whole thing is, you wanna prove it? Prove it by your actions. Don't say that we're criminalizing homelessness right now because we know right now, there's nothing that's going to stop homelessness until you have people, until you give them the best social services. And the best social services is to get people on their feet and get them to be able to produce for themselves. You know, I mean, we get, we get civil, all day we'll argue it down and say, okay, no, we're criminalizing this. But that is not the case. Everybody has rights, including people who come out of an ATM, including people who wanna eat downtown. Everybody has rights and we gotta balance it out somehow downtown.
Mr. Cradville? You have to stop yelling out. Yes, sir, do the comment.
Oh, yes.
Name and address, please, sir.
I was on Larry Robinson Street. Um, I just wanna, because you did mention that you have a lot of homeless people that have that empathy for them and this isn't something to put homeless people worse down. This is something to sort of respect the rights of all the citizens everywhere in New Brunswick. I'm just wondering if, based on the analogy you use of teaching a man how to fish, instead of giving him a fish for a day. I just, I feel like this ordinance is, though it might do what you said it would and stop people who are able-bodied and just taking advantage of the good New Brunswick citizens who earn their keep and earn their paycheck, I think it also plays a much more detrimental role to the homeless people than actually helping them. Because this isn't really giving them a fish or teaching them how to fish, it's just taking away the pool from them, basically. So, you know, like, it solves one problem, but I feel it causes many, many more. And I urge you all to reconsider and not pass this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. This man.
Sasu Javon, Carbon Street. Um, I just wanted to speak on the point of people who are coming out of the ATM. Uh, I was wondering if it would be possible to make the ordinance a little less overbearing on like the whole area of downtown? Because, okay, like I do understand the point of, you know, somebody coming out of the ATM, maybe they don't want to, you know, whatever, give their money. But it seems as if the ordinance literally just covers the whole entire area, like prohibits homeless people from even, you know, going down there and trying to ask for money. So I'm just wondering if there's any way to make it a little less strict?
Not at this time, ma'am. I mean...
Not at all.
I'm not saying not at all, let me rephrase that. I believe that, we believe, I mean, I believe myself, that the ordinance that Mr. Shammy is telling us about and they said that it was upheld in the First Circuit Court is what I'm relying on, is his information that we're doing a constitutional thing.
Mr. Shammy, one question. The ATM is not only a bank because they're focusing on downtown, but in French, there's businesses that have, you know, the cash machines, so it's not just downtown. Like we might say, it's just for downtown, no. It's all over. There's all the places in the city that have also the same situation. So it's not just to criminalize. And I just wanna add that, I personally, when I see somebody, if I have it, I have it, I give it. But if I don't, I think that we love more, I invite them, we buy them food. Or I invite them to, and I tell them about, just provide some of the services that we have here for them to eat and their families. So I think with that, we love them more, we get them engaged and connected with somebody or the organization at least, that might be able to help them later on with whatever situation they're going through, especially for families.
And that's, I think that's a good idea in theory, but when it comes down to it, you know, homeless people, if they can't solicit in these streets anymore, they're not gonna be around. So, you know, they're not really gonna look for people to, you know, go and buy them food anymore. They're really just gonna not be there, you know what I mean? They're just gonna, I guess, find someplace else and be worse off than they were before. And as far as it being upheld in the First Circuit Court, I feel even though it may be deemed constitutional by Justice Sauer, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's needed. I still haven't really seen like substantial reason to really implement this ordinance. I like, maybe, okay, it makes sense if, you know, it's stopping people from going in traffic, but I see like this is really just stopping them from really asking for money from a majority of the cities. So I feel like that's just more than a challenge.
Mr. Shammy, have we had any residents express concern of a homeless, or anybody? And we are assuming that they are homeless when they ask for money and that's not necessarily the truth of people, residents that have been encountered that they get. I don't like it.
I don't, I can't give you a date and time, but I have heard over the years that there has been issues with people waiting in line at the state theater being approached by people and they say no, and people persist. That's the type of conduct that this particular ordinance would address. And there's police officers there that tell, you know, the person who's soliciting to please move on or what have you. And I know that in a busy city like we have here, I mean, that the opportunity for that is pretty great. Like I said, this is modeled after an ordinance that was done in Worcester. That's a pretty big city too, with banks and theaters and things of that nature.
Mr. Ohio?
Um, I just wanted to say that I have had constituents today and expressed concern for their own safety and been intimidated when they were approached by certain people in the community. And it has quite honestly most frequently happened in here or around an ATM. And so, you know, the good news, bad news is that there's a camera there, so the incident can be captured by camera. But you don't want people to feel afraid to use the local services that are there. So I have been spoken to by constituents on that issue.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Molly O'Brien, I live in the Second Ward. I just wanna say I've been working at the state theater for over three years and it's never been an issue. Homeless people do hang out in the lobbies and they come talk to the ticket office operators and they're welcome, they're not, no one's ever complained about anything like that.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Jonathan Mogan, Ward Six. All right, two things here. First, I'm just gonna, first, I'm just gonna comment. I mean, everybody already says how they feel about it. At least everybody here has spoken so far. My question is first, what part of the population are you trying to protect or defend? I mean, because you've already, you've already gone, you know, and criminalized homeless people because that's what you guys are saying, that they're afraid that, you know, something's gonna happen. So you're already basically criminalizing, so we'll go with that. So what part of the population are you trying to protect from these criminal activity? That's a question to the, I guess, to the attorney. Because that's what you're trying to do, that's what the law is, that's what your job is to do.
I'm not quite sure I understand you're telling these questions, but this ordinance applies to anyone, everyone. It doesn't matter if you decide one day you need five dollars to catch a bus or if you actually are homeless.
Absolutely, absolutely.
This would address anyone who panhandles or solicits for themselves.
Absolutely, I'm aware that, I'm aware that the law applies to every citizen. But I'm saying, to whom is the law protecting? Because you guys have gone and criminalized homelessness, said that you're afraid that people are gonna get hurt, you know? You know, so what people are you protecting from being affected by that, you know, by this criminal activity? That's unconstitutional, that's, the law in passing is constitutional, but the unconstitutional act that they're doing by soliciting in these locations.
I think I'd say already that I'm of the belief that the ordinance is constitutional.
The ordinance is constitutional, we're trying to protect everybody from the ordinance.
All right, yeah, I'm trying to protect everybody from the ordinance as well. So you guys are not against that? Since you're trying to protect everybody from the ordinance, I'm trying to protect the right of the ordinance too. I don't want this ordinance, I don't like this. I don't want this, I don't want this to be something that is true, just as a citizen that maybe doesn't know much. Maybe doesn't have that level of vocabulary, I don't think that this is good. Anybody, I'm not sure, I mean, I'm just asking from across state, but you guys have some type of power or something, I'm not sure. But, um, do you guys think that this is right? That there should be laws that protect one human being from asking another human being at a certain location because that human being knows that the person who went to that location has money now? Honestly, like, you're asking like somebody to go to, like, if I knew you got money now, I'd go there. Like, how, do you have money? You say no, like, okay, wait for the next person to come by. I mean, I'm standing out in the open in front of an ATM. You know, like, if that's the thing you're trying to protect, I'm asking, I'm trying to protect somebody answering.
Sir, I don't, if you could just comment, I don't understand the question that you're asking.
The question is, who is the law trying to protect? That's the real question, anybody, I don't understand that.
I just answered you before, sir, anyway.
All right, no problem.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on the ordinance? Anybody else? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Ordinance is on first reading. Five oh four, an ordinance to amend supplement revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Schedule thirty-nine. Parking zones for handicapped persons in Schedule twenty-nine, time limit parking. And two handicap parking zones in two sixty-two Seaton Street and six Rutgers Street. And one time limit parking area at Sunset Street.
Move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, June third, at five-thirty for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Five oh five is held with the request of the administrator. Five zero six, amend the management salary ordinance.
Really, two titles that we wanna use this year. No other amendments to the ordinance other than the addition of those titles.
Okay?
Thank you. Uh, move the ordinance setting down Wednesday, June third, by thirty, same date to be advertised for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. We have resolutions five fifty-eight and five eighty-six. We are holding five sixty-two, five sixty-three, and five eighty-four. Is that correct? Mr. Cradville?
Mr. Council President, we're also holding five seventy-one, the matrix matter which dealt with the recreation park.
Okay, oh, that's right, there we go, we got five seventy-one also. Anybody from the public like to comment on the resolutions? Resolutions are on, yes, sir, step right up.
Hello.
Hello.
Again, I'm a Rutgers student. I have some questions and comments on...
You can move the microphone up to the head.
On five sixty-seven.
Five six seven? Yes, sir.
So is this basically the authorization ordinance regarding the ten thirty-three program?
Captain Miller? On five sixty-seven, the New Brunswick Police Department's in possession of the U.S. Department of Defense.
I refer to the...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There is, the ten thirty-three program is a government program whereby local counties, municipalities, and other public entities could receive surplus equipment from the U.S. government. Probably all heard about that in the past. There's been a new regulation that the municipal council, an entity that may receive surplus property, acknowledge and authorize it. And that's exactly what this resolution does, to participate in that particular program.
Thank you.
So this is a regulation? This is a regulation by the U.S. Department of Defense to, for the city to authorize...
Right.
Receiving materials under the ten thirty-three program?
To participate in the program.
Okay, how long would this preauthorization last?
My understanding, the way it's read, it's indefinite. As long as the program is in existence, the authorization is in place unless the council were to act in a similar kind of a...
Okay, so the city would not be receiving anything under this current ordinance? That this ordinance isn't to, for the city to receive anything, it's just to authorize the program?
Authorize the program, participate, so as to receive things perhaps in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to address five...
May you address, please, sir?
Anthony of Reindino, Dick Street.
Thank you, sir.
I'd also like to address five sixty-eight, sorry, no, five sixty-seven, about the ten thirty-three program. I have, I'm wondering why you guys are thinking about continuing the program when the federal government is in the process of updating the program? You need a few more M sixteen's before Obama gets rid of it? Also, I'd like to know what kind of surplus material would you receive?
Captain?
The federal government is gonna, is in the process of restricting different items. There's a lot more than just weapons, M sixteen's. The city of New Brunswick has never received an M sixteen or any weapon from that program. There's a lot of other equipment, vehicles, lighting equipment, and the law, as Mr. Cradville pointed out, is what we think that we have received here. We have never received any weapons of any kind and as of today, do not anticipate on...
We have never received any weapons of any kind and, as of today, do not anticipate on.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Council President. I want to draw your attention, try to, rather, I want to draw your attention to the issue of there being at least a dozen people who are forced to stand in this room and a dozen more out in the hallway. The business that you're conducting, uh, it's hard for people to participate in the parts of the meeting that they want to. Uh, we just saw a man in a wheelchair, uh, you know, forced to force his way into the room if he wanted to be here to watch the vote of you voting on that unconstitutional thing. So I suggest you suspend the meeting and don't, don't pass anything else tonight because it could be challenged in court.
Mr. Pratt, we, you have anything under resolutions? I'm just gonna talk to you about the overcrowding after this public session. Sure, we do, we told you.
Okay. And I just want to suggest that there's a available meeting space.
You've got a valid point. We're overcrowded. I can see it. Okay?
Okay. Well, I hope you'll, you move the meeting somewhere else next time.
I think, we'll discuss it.
Thank you. Uh, 561, can you just tell me a little bit about the, the business that's buying the liquor license? Are they gonna use it at the same locations as the Maketa location?
Shami, it's my understanding that that is the location. It's a new establishment. There was a liquor license there. That one apparently is going in pocket, I understand. And this is a new license to that location for that particular operator.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. When he says that's going in pocket, that means it's staying with the existing owner?
I'm not quite sure what's going on with it. Mr. Therese may be able to help.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Therese.
The current owner of the license, George Baroud, is selling the license to the Dylan Jarum LLC. The Dylan Jarum LLC is taking the license that was in Mr. Baroud's pocket and placing it in the location of a former restaurant that was at, uh, 338 George Street.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
565, shared services agreement for the two buses. Can you tell me what buses they are and, uh, what areas they serve?
Mr. Patterson?
This is the annual contract the city does with the county for the shuttle bus, um, system that we do with, with the county. Uh, it's actually, uh, one bus route that two buses operate on. I believe they designate the M5 bus and it runs through, uh, the Second Ward, uh, out to the Jersey Avenue industrial area. Uh, the intention is to provide better transit service for persons who may not have access to vehicles to be able to get to jobs in that area and be able to get through some of the neighborhoods. And also interconnect in downtown with the other transit services that are, are down there and access to jobs in downtown.
Thank you, sir.
Can you tell me how many bus shelters are along this route?
Bus shelter?
Yeah.
Do we have any...
How many stops total?
How many stops are our, Patrick, sir?
Um, I don't know what the county is. There are a number of bus shelters along the route. Uh, not every place where it goes has a, a shelter, uh, but there are a number of them out there. I don't know what the exact number of that is. The county is the one that, uh, operates the shuttle, so they might have an answer.
Okay, thank you. The Northeastern Benefit Services Contract is 569. Can you tell me, um, why, why wasn't this bid? Was there any research done if there could be a better deal or did you just say you wanted to extend it?
The, uh, the original contract was bid. Um, we think their fee schedule is very fair. It's 2% of the value of the, uh, the dental contract. We enjoy their services. They're helpful to us and our employees. We took advantage of the opportunity to renew because that's what the base, uh, original bid allows to do.
Thank you, sir.
Um, the Nelson Street Roadway Sidewalk Repair, 51572. Can you tell me what parts of Nelson Street?
572?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Goulden?
It's the east side of Nielsen Street from Byard Street to Hyrum Square.
Thank you, Mr. Goulden.
Thank you.
What's, can I get an update on the, the work at the water utility pump stations? I see at least two items on there. Care about that? Significant sums of money things, though.
Which specific ones are you talking about?
574, Hatchmont McDonald. And then, uh, should be engineering services from the same company for $255,000.
Uh, 5, let's start with 578. That's an old contract. We awarded that back in 2011. Um, the, uh, the final bills are coming in against that contract. That was the design work for the upgrades of the raw wood pump stations. Uh, and we had to reconfigure some of the, the funding accounts because, um, we had charged some other expenses. Uh, the VFD work, we charged them to a grant that once contemplated paying Hatchmont under the grant. So we just had to reconfigure some funding, uh, accounts. That's simply an accounting change. Uh, 74 is awarding a contract to them to be the construction manager and inspector during the construction phase of this project. That is the, uh, upgrade of the pump state, uh, the change out of the pumps, the, uh, motors, the traveling screens, new roofs at both locations, uh, adding an emergency generator at the DNR Canal.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
So just to clear it up on that one, $255,000, is that the, the increase or is that the new total?
That is the same total. We're just, if you look at the body of the resolution, the, we're charging different accounts than what we originally contemplated.
Understood. Thank you.
The value of the contract hasn't changed.
Thank you.
Um, can I get an update on 580, the Charles Street Water and Sewer Main locations? Is that, is there a timeframe for when that'll be done?
Mr. Goulden?
The, uh, work is proceeding on Charles Street and it should be, uh, I would say within a month, month and a half. Something like that. It should be, not completion.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
And can you just tell me what's the reason for the increase, the, uh, 20, more than 20% increase?
When we opened the street for installation of the water main and sewer line, we found the ground was contaminated with petroleum. So we had to report to DEP that we had a, uh, case number, get a case number for that environmental cleanup. So this is the cost to treat that or haul that material away and provide new material to make its place.
Where, where was the contamination hauled off to and disposed of?
I believe beside his Carter S.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goulden.
Um, I need, I need to, to speak against 577. More money for lawyers for the police officer who murdered an innocent citizen. Uh, Brad Burdell has already been paid a handsome sum by the city government since he, uh, shot and killed Barry Deloche on his last day of work. Although he resigned in August, the city government allowed him to collect a salary for six additional months. Or I guess, uh, five additional months. Can you tell me, why did you do that? Why did you let the man who had resigned, had committed departmental violations and, uh, wanted to leave? Why did you allow him to collect an additional five months of salary?
Mr. Pratt, we're, we're talking about the resolutions here. This is, you can go, you can get into that in the public comments.
Sure. I'm suggesting you've already paid his legal bills and then some.
Yes.
So don't pay this one to them. Do you think he was right? What happened? Did you know about it?
Mr. Pratt, I ask you again to move to the resolutions and not interview me.
Well, I'm speaking about Officer Burdell. And Officer Burdell worked for the city and he, he committed a, a serious crime while he was on the job. And for that reason, he's never gonna be a police officer again, thankfully. But you gave him a gift on his way out the door. Please do not continue to pay his legal bills after you gave him a gift that equates to $50,000. That's wrong.
Mr. Pratt, we're bound by law to pay his legal bills. This is...
You weren't bound by law to do that, though, and you did. Can you tell me why?
To do what?
To pay him extra salary after...
We're bound by law, right? But we're bound by his collective bargaining between the PPA, you know, the city...
That's the collective bargaining agreement?
The total man is proven guilty. Whatever happened, we're obligated to pay his salary. Mr. Shami, you can speak.
I don't know what Mr. Pratt was talking about. There's nothing about it in the resolution. The resolution is to approve a medical bill for Mr. Mitzer for their defense, which were statutorily required to do, uh, the state statute and local orders in his defense of Mr. Burdell's...
Thank you. Please stick to the, to the, to the resolution, sir.
I've said it before and I'll say it again. You're part of a criminal organization. You're not only protecting criminals, but you're paying them and paying their lawyer bills. And that is wrong. You might not understand it. You might not believe it, but you're part of a criminal organization and you're protecting criminals. Um, I have one last one to ask about, 585. Just please tell me, what is the details of this settlement? It's been a long time since I've seen a settlement on the agenda.
585, Mr. Shami. Um, as the council, as you recall, this particular litigation arose out of the Bugle Oak Park Pump Station Rehabilitation, Rehabilitation Project whereby, um, there was issues regarding, um, issues brought up regarding, uh, deep restrictions on the actual conveyance of the land to the city of New Brunswick and some green acres issues. Um, in connection with those issues, the city of New Brunswick stopped the contractor, explored those issues to, to its satisfaction, resolved the, the issues with green acres, and then the contractor, the project continued. Um, as a result of the delay and some, uh, changes to the project, the contractor sued the city of New Brunswick for delay damages and some other damages in connection with the project. The contractor successfully completed the project, but was of the opinion they were entitled to damages. Uh, when the city got sued, we turned around and sued our consulting engineers, Chul and Gassman, on the basis that they should have known there were issues that were brought to our attention because they were the ones who designed the project, investigated the park, et cetera. Uh, as a result of maybe four years of litigation, um, during which I handled the case exclusively, um, we finally, uh, came to a resolution whereby, uh, the plaintiff agreed to accept the sum of $150,000 to settle the case. Uh, bear in mind that the demand was 300,000, uh, practically 300,000, I think 297 when, when we started the litigation. Um, 50,000 of which that, of that settlement money will come from Chul and Gassman and the 100,000 will come from the city of New Brunswick. That's what the resolution reads. That's what the authorization requests from the council to resolve this litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Shami.
So these next few questions are very important. The, uh, when somebody sues the city, does the city council get notified? Who gets notified?
I don't get notified. You're named defendant. You'll be served with a complaint, unfortunately, if something's a complaint. But I, I would not represent to the council that every time we get sued, you, you become aware of it because that usually goes to our municipal joint insurance fund attorneys who handle those matters.
Does the council want to be notified? Do you desire to be notified when the city is sued?
Mr. Pratt, well, once again, we're moving off the subject of the, uh, resolution. Can we please move to, talk about the resolution?
You say that we have a tough question that you don't want to answer. So can you just please answer? Do you want to be notified when we get sued?
Mr. Pratt, let's stick to the resolutions, okay? Please don't try to determine what's going on in my mind. I have a wife at home that tries to do that all the time. So please, let's stick to 585, please. Thank you.
Right. I'm saying there's a problem here. The city gets sued, the council's not notified. Things are settled. Why is this the first settlement in a long time? Haven't there been other settlements and do they always get put on the agenda? Or do they sometimes get done without the council's knowledge?
Once again, Mr. Pratt, we're speaking about...
That's a valid question, sir.
Please don't raise your voice to me.
I'm asking you, you're about to approve a settlement.
Mr. Shami, please.
This particular resolution, um, I think the council's been made aware of this particular lawsuit for several years. It's been ongoing, um, in fact, it was discussed here with this ruling, professor ruling, if you will, uh, many, many months ago. In any event, uh, this particular settlement is on the council's agenda because, um, the monies that are required to be paid are coming from the city. The resolution of this particular claim is not something that is covered by our insurance fund, the joint insurance fund. Those resolutions, the money comes from the joint insurance fund, don't come before this council.
Thank you, Mr. Shami. Yes, sir, Mr. Pratt.
Just closed by saying, I'm very alarmed about that. If I were on the city council, I'd be, demand to be notified whenever a lawsuit was filed against the city or settled. You need to be a watchdog. You need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Anybody else on the resolutions? Seating done?
I just have a quick question and maybe Captain Miller you can answer. Does any restriction of what kind of equipment can the police department receive on the 1033 program?
Is there a restriction?
Any restriction on the equipment or...
As of right now, there are no restrictions, but there is legislation coming that is gonna put restrictions on it.
Anybody else on resolutions? Seating done?
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson.
You are holding 563.
We're holding numbers. I have it right here and we're holding number 562, 563, 584, 571.
Yes.
You are.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes, but I'm abstaining of 567. Don't know it.
Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Aye.
Council President Egan.
Yes. Now move to the public portion of the meeting. Please come on up. You have five minutes to address the council. Step right up. Name and address, please.
Dana Redding. I live at 163 Eagle Road in Skilman. I'm a professor in the School of Management and Labor Relations and director of the Center for Women in Work. And I'm here to speak on earned sick days. Um, the Center for Women in Work was commissioned to conduct a study of the implementation of Jersey City's ordinance for earned sick days. Jersey City's ordinance provided that businesses with 10 or more workers provide five paid sick days to their employees and businesses with nine or fewer provide five unpaid sick days to their employees. About a year after that was implemented, uh, we were commissioned to do the study. We contracted with the Ebelton Center for Public Interest polling. We did a poll of 289, uh, business owners and 198 employees in Junction City. And so I'm, I'm just here to share some of the findings from that study. Um, what we found actually was that about 60% of the businesses we surveyed did not have to change their policies at all to implement the law. By the time we did the survey, about 80% of businesses were providing their workers with paid sick days in compliance with the law. Um, of those who provided sick time, 91% of those who provided it were paying it, even though small businesses were not required to pay that time by the ordinance. Uh, among those who changed their policies to provide earned sick days, 28% reported a decrease in workers coming to work sick. And you have to remember that a year out is not much of a time to see a difference. But 28% reported a decrease in workers coming to work sick. 42% reported at least, who changed their policies, reported at least, uh, one benefit such as increased productivity, improved quality of hires, uh, or decreased turnover. Um, 92% of the businesses we surveyed said they saw no change at all really in their employees' use of earned sick days. Um, if they were split otherwise, some saw about 3%, saw an increase, and about 3% saw a decrease. Um, of those who said that employees used earned sick days, they said that they did not use all the sick days they were awarded. So both the employers and the employees said that workers were using about three or fewer sick days. And that fits with research that's been done in San Francisco and in Connecticut on workers' use of earned sick days. What we find is that workers tend to bank those days and they tend to use them in, when something serious happens. Um, those who lacked access to earned sick days were those who most needed it. So younger workers, part-time workers, uh, workers who were paid less. Uh, for those with increased access to earned sick days, about 40% reported greater job satisfaction. Our, our results fit well with those studies that have been done elsewhere in San Francisco and Connecticut, though the, though the actual provisions of those laws were somewhat different. Um, but in both of those cases, about two-thirds of business owners said that they supported the adoption of earned sick days laws. So, and I'm happy to answer questions you might have. I'm swimming in data if you want any of them.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Francisco. Vivo en New Brunswick y soy miembro de la junión de la escuela. Con mi nuevo proyecto Esperanza.
With new labor and Esperanza projects.
Hemos asistido a las reuniones del consejo de la ciudad por tres meses.
We've come to, we've been coming to city council meetings for the last three months.
Para explicar cómo una ley de los días pagados de enfermedad va a beneficiar a nuestra ciudad y familias.
To explain how earned sick leave law would benefit our city and our families.
Desde entonces hemos presentado más de mil firmas.
Since then, we've presented over a thousand signatures.
Y ustedes han escuchado.
And you have heard?
Testimonios de trabajadores de restaurantes que tienen que trabajar mientras están enfermos porque no tienen días de enfermedad.
Are these our testimony of restaurant workers who have to work long sick because they don't have any sick time?
Testimonios de trabajadores quienes fueron despedidos de su trabajo por tratar de cuidarse de su salud.
Testimonios from workers who were fired from their jobs because they were trying to manage their personal health.
La historia de un padre que faltó al nacimiento de su hijo por falta de días de enfermedad.
Story of a father who missed the birth of his child because he lacked paid sick leave.
Otra historia de una mujer sufriendo de cáncer que no tuvo su esposa a su lado en el hospital porque tenía que trabajar.
Another story of a woman who had cancer but could not have her husband at her side while she was in the hospital because he did not have sick leaves.
Testimonios de madres, de padres, de estudiantes, de miembros de la organización comunitaria como alianza de comida de New Brunswick.
You've heard testimonies from mothers, from fathers, from students, and from members of organizations, community organizations like the New Brunswick Community Food Line.
Los resultados de investigaciones por la Universidad Rocker.
And you've heard the results of research by Rutgers University.
Que muestran que una ley si solo lleva impactos mínimos a los negocios mientras lleva beneficios grandes a los trabajadores.
That show that laws such as this only cause minimal impact to businesses while having a large benefit for, for many others.
Los testimonios de médicos de Robert Wood Johnson y la clínica Chandler.
You've heard the testimonies from doctors at Robert Wood Johnson and at Chandler Clinic.
Y cómo la falta de días pagados impacta a su habilidad.
And how lacking earned sick leave impacts their ability.
De tratar a sus pacientes, en algunos casos haciendo casi imposible de hacer operaciones.
It affects their ability to properly treat their patients, sometimes making it almost impossible to perform necessary operations.
Hemos ofrecido varias veces de responder a preguntas que tienen el consejo sobre los impactos de la ley.
We've offered in various times to answer any questions that the council has about this law.
Hemos presentado una ley de la copia ya escrita y lista para ser votada, pero no hemos recibido ninguna pregunta, respuesta, ni comentario de ustedes.
Maybe you can present a version of the law that's, you know, ready to go, but we haven't heard any response from the council yet.
Estamos aquí hoy para preguntarles a los miembros del consejo de la ciudad.
We're going to ask the members of the council tonight.
¿Cuándo van a votar en esta ordenanza?
When will you put this to vote on the agenda?
Hemos clarificado los beneficios de la salud pública.
We've clarified the benefits for public health.
Los beneficios económicos.
Economic benefits.
Y los beneficios para todos que viven y trabajan aquí frecuentemente.
And all the benefits for everyone who lives and works in the city.
En los restaurantes de la ciudad.
And especially in restaurants.
Sabemos a través de nuestra petición que tenemos el apoyo del público de New Brunswick.
We know through our, our petitions that we have the support of the, the public of New Brunswick.
Y que fácilmente ganaría en un voto popular siguiendo Trenton y Montclair y las siete otras ciudades en New Jersey.
And that we would easily win a popular vote, such following cities like Montclair and like Trenton and like the other seven cities in New Brunswick or in New Jersey.
Que tienen leyes que garantizan este derecho básico a sus trabajadores.
That also have laws that guarantee this basic right to their worker.
Yo apoyo la ordenanza de días pagados de enfermedad y quisiera verla en la agenda.
I support the earned sick leave law and I'd like to see it on the agenda.
Les pregunto de parte de la comunidad, ¿cuándo van, va a votar el consejo en la ordenanza de días pagados de enfermedad?
So I'm asking you, the council, on behalf of the community, when will the council vote for this ordinance for earned sick leave?
Gracias.
Thank you.
I'm not sure I can make this louder, I'm just. Can I take it out? Okay. Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ellen Witt. I live at 218 Rutgers Street here in New Brunswick. I've lived here in New Brunswick for nearly 17 years. I'm here tonight because I am deeply concerned that in spite of, for many people, many who are working here in the city in many years, in many instances for many years, that workers often do not have any earned sick leave. As you know, many employers will not put in place sick leave benefits voluntarily. Now, I think the facts are self-evident, the previous two, couple of speakers spoke to them well, explaining why we need this, why it would be in the interests of people here in this city. So that's not actually in dispute. However, I do think that it is very important that in this instance, we, we cannot simply wait for employers to provide something voluntarily. It's going to be necessary and really is the ethical obligation of this council to act on this and act on behalf of the members of this community. Without that, we will not see these benefits for, for working people here. So my question is similar to the previous person. When are, will this be discussed and voted on? We want to and expect to see you vote in favor of earned sick leave as an obligation of businesses here in this city. So, so if you could answer that, I'd appreciate it. Can you speak to that?
I have no answer for you at this time, ma'am. I can't give you a specific date or to, or when, or when we're not going to support earned sick leave. We're all still have questions to be answered and so we're trying to do some research and at this time, I can't give you an answer to that question. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, please, if you'd like to.
Absolutely.
I know that there's some questions that, that some of us still have, and we're waiting on them, but I think it's, it's, it's time for us to put it on the agenda to have a discussion that, to answer those questions, to have, that's my own personal, and I hope we respectfully ask the council to see if we have this on the next agenda or within the next month. I think it's, you know, it's enough time that has passed and we haven't, we have a chance to ask questions we haven't asked yet. Some of us have the information, some of us don't have, and we still have more questions. But we have to have that conversation. So I respectfully, I'm asking that maybe within the next month if we could have this item on, on the agenda just for discussion, and then we'll take it from there.
Jack?
Okay, I, I hope that you will discuss it as soon as possible. I, I don't think there's any question that these workers deserve sick leave, correct? So that's not in dispute, so, and it's not a question that they're just not automatically going to get it without some action from this body. So I, I think it's important for the members of this community to actually hear what it is that you have questions about that's holding us up and to actually articulate that to us. Simply telling us month after month that we've got questions without saying what those questions are so that we can even address those questions. I think it's important that you start to actually answer this community, which is down the hall and down the steps.
I come from a building construction trade union where we don't have any paid sick leave. So what, what do you, what do you suggest, what do you suggest in my opinion? How, how do I feel? I worked for 16 years, my vote might change, but I didn't get paid. I didn't get paid. We have guys in my industry here who worked 25, 30 years, we don't have any paid sick leave, no seniority. We don't have any of those, we don't have any of those things.
And how did you feel when you weren't getting paid and you needed to take something?
I felt that's the deal, I felt that that's the deal that I made when I took the job. That's how I felt, that's the deal that I made when I took the job. Now, I'm not saying I'm against paid sick leave, but I'm just telling you, these are some of the questions I have, you ask me the questions I have to ask, and that's a legitimate question. My next question is, how do we enforce the paid sick leave? Have you, can you tell us how you think we should, how do you, how are we going to enforce it with temporary and, and temporary hire vacancies? How, how do you enforce that, ma'am?
There are means to enforce things like that, just as there are means to enforce minimum wage.
Tell me a couple ways.
Just that there's means to enforce, prevent wage theft, which this, this body fortunately has taken up and done very well with. So I think that that's, that set a precedent and there's possibilities to look at this in similar ways. I'm not going to, I'm not going to dictate you here exactly how everything would, all the details would be written out, but I do think that we should all wonder, for all workers, if, if they're not getting paid sick leave at all, then there's an issue. And I'm sure that, that many construction trades workers would stand by that, that it's a problem for them as well. But it's especially a problem when you're an extremely low-paid worker and that you really need some paid sick leave in order to be able to just take care of yourself and take care of the health of this community. So I think that's, that's a reasonable thing to put forward.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Reynanda. Yo vivo aquí en New Brunswick, 51º Estilo.
My name is Reynaza, I live in New Brunswick, 51º Estilo. 51º.
Estamos hoy aquí porque realmente tenemos una gran necesidad de que ustedes como representantes de la ciudad aprueben que la ordenanza de días pagados de enfermedad pase. Depende de ustedes que nos apoyen.
We're here because we really need the council to pass and support and hold on the earned sick leave.
Ya es hora de que nosotros como trabajadores tengamos algunas leyes que nos beneficien tanto a nosotros, porque nosotros como trabajadores no tenemos nada que nos beneficia.
Now is the time for workers like us to have rights like this because right now we workers don't have any, any benefits like this.
Si ustedes como representantes de la ciudad no nos apoyan, ¿quién nos apoya?
If you as the council and representatives don't support us on rules.
Nosotros queremos que ustedes lean y nos digan, lo vamos a pasar, lo vamos, lo vamos a aceptar leerlo, necesitamos que una respuesta porque es, ya es justo de que nosotros tengamos algo que nos ayude.
We would like you to, to read the ordinance and let us know when you're ready to vote on it because now is the time we need these rights.
Porque no todos los trabajadores, los trabajadores y agencias precisamente somos pisoteados y no merecemos ser eso porque somos seres humanos.
Right now, agency workers are taking advantage of, we, we don't deserve this because we're given these.
Algunos les pagan un día de enfermedad y qué bueno, me da mucho gusto, pero los que no, no los pagan, nosotros estamos sufriendo.
Some people do receive paid sick leave and that's great for them, but for those of us who don't, we're suffering.
Por eso estamos hoy aquí porque realmente estamos, porque queremos que las cosas cambien en esta ciudad, no podemos seguir en el pasado, tenemos que cambiar y en sus manos está cambiar que en New Brunswick tengamos días de enfermedad.
That's why we're here, because things need to change, things that are past, so we're here to move forward.
Todo lo que estamos aquí estamos esperando un cambio y hecho por ustedes.
We're all here hoping for a change that you guys can make.
Esto lo gracias.
It's all thank you.
My name is Mark Steffensett, I'm at 5 Harvey Street in New Brunswick. I run a auto repair shop on Harvey Street, right on Main Street. I'm here for some type of solution about our street, our Harvey Street is being infested by drug dealers, drunks and all of this stuff. I called down to the police department several times a day trying to get a resolution on how to deal with this. But what happens, the police, they come out, they do, you know, they move the drunks and they move people, but they come back in hours, minutes, and they assemble again, and it's constantly going on. So I'm trying to come to the council, try to figure out what type of ordinance do they have for people that don't live on our street, but parades on our street and just, you know, the activities and all of that. So I'm here to try to figure out what do we do for that. I've been, I've been at this location over 20 years. This is the worst I have seen.
Is it by Harvey Street or Harvey?
Right, no, 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 I'm down by the Hug Liquor Store. Actually, I'm behind the Hug Liquor Store. And New Brunswick Police Department, you know, they comes out and, you know, they move them as we go, but they always come back and it's the same crowd. But now, what I'm seeing now is that the drunks is assembling with the dealers and they're selling drugs right on our street. I don't know what the resolution is, but I'm here to try to find it out.
We can certainly talk to, or ask the police to put some more police presence down there. Captain Miller?
I'll talk to the captain of operations brother, I'm controlling it. I can speak to Del Day afterward, talk about the drug activity.
Speak to Captain Miller at the meeting, let him know about the drug activity. We'll let him speak with the captain of operations and raise some more police awareness down there.
What type of ordinance do they have for like murder? Do they have any type of?
We just went through it for, for a good part of the evening. Some people think it's unconstitutional and some people have different opinions, but we just went through it, go ahead, Mr. Moore.
The wittery per se has been declared unconstitutional as far as just for lawyer. You can't prevent people from just standing around. However, you can prevent people from standing around if they're engaging in illegal activity, lawyering for purposes of solicitation of prostitution, for purposes of solicitation of drug sales, those things, we have on our books, so.
We have that, sir.
Just to say you can't stand on the street, you can't outlaw that.
Most of the time, they sit on porches that they don't live there and they just sit there, they drink, you know, they, they sell drugs. But what, so what I'm finding out now is that the, the people that's drinkers is assembling with the drug dealers.
So why don't we start by you having a conversation with Captain Miller and we'll see if we can solve the problem down there and, and get the illegal activity disbanded and, I can speak to Captain Miller after the meeting.
You're closer to what a health city looks like.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So would you say that because of, and I say blaming on the liquor stores per se, but do you think that they congregate there, is that a draw? You know what I'm saying, are they congregating?
I think.
Because I know where you're at, because I used to, I mean, I live right here.
I think that's a draw to a certain degree, but I think that the drug dealers, they're not smart and they know that it's, you know, whatever, the law is not, you know, it's not, it's really on their side opposed to, you know, going after. Right. Because, you know, most of the time, the regular police officers, they come through and move them out. They move them out and then hour, half an hour, they're right back.
I just have a question. When they congregate on the porches, are the owners or the residents of those homes there with them?
No.
Because I remember many years ago, and I don't know if it's still true, Captain Miller, but we've had a community policing program. We used to tell the officers, we used to tell the people to do signs, "No trespassing", trespassing in the property, so the police is able to do something when they have a sign even in your property, in your house. So I don't know if that's still something that you can enjoy in terms of protecting those who live there, they're willing to put a sign, you know, "No trespassing" in my, my. it might, might help out for them not to, eh, congregate in, in those areas. And there's those homes, especially if they don't live there.
Well, they're really getting pretty smart because what they do is they may, they may stay there for, let's say, 15 minutes and then they'll move down to another house or another part of the block. But they, they really know how to deal with police because they, you know, they're getting smart. They have all the, all the, talking about the drug users, they know to come right there and pick up whatever they're gonna pick up. And you see it, right? And we got kids, kids that live there, you know, it's, it's, it's a mess.
All right, sir. We certainly have to police stand and look after you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Genesis. My name is. Días de. De enfermedad. Pagados.
She says we'd like to see a law approved for paid sick days for New Brunswick workers. Good evening, my name is Natasha. I'm a student at Lincoln School. And we ask you to pass the law for paid sick days for all workers.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Conflía Jartín. Como ven, nosotros somos miembros del Proyecto Esperanza, junto con Unity Square y New Labor. Estamos aquí pidiéndoles otra vez, molestandolos como siempre.
Uh, we're here tonight as members of the Esperanza Project together with New Labor and Unity Square to ask once more, to bug you once again.
Estamos aquí luchando para que nos puedan ayudar, para que puedan poner en su agenda la petición sobre los días de enfermedad pagados para todos los trabajadores.
We're here, uh, uh, struggling and, and asking that you can put at least on the agenda the, the ordinance proposal for earned sick leave, for paid sick days for workers.
Esto nos afecta también a nuestros hijos, no nada más a nosotros. También nuestros hijos son perjudicados en este aspecto.
This affects our children, not just us as parents and adults. It also harms children.
Solo les pedimos que tomen en cuenta que también nosotros somos padres y que tenemos, eh, la necesidad en los días de enfermedad pagados de estar un día en casa.
And we just ask you to consider as well that's not just for us as parents, but when children are sick, when, uh, we need a paid sick day to be at home with a sick child.
Les damos gracias por enfrentarnos el tiempo y darnos la oportunidad de estar aquí.
We thank you for giving us the time, uh, and the opportunity to be here.
Anybody else like to talk to the council? Anybody else?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Liliana y buenas noches.
Good evening, my name is Liliana and I live in New Brunswick.
Mi pregunta es, ¿van a votar en la ley de días pagados de enfermedad y ponerla en agenda?
She, uh, asks if, uh, you guys will vote and put on your agenda for, uh, earned sick leave in New Brunswick.
Yo apoyo también de días pagados de enfermedad si era que ustedes la ponen en la agenda.
I support earned sick leave in New Brunswick and I request that you please put this on your agenda. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Rocío López. Soy una ciudadana más de este pueblo.
Good evening, my name is Rocío López. I'm also a citizen of this town.
Soy una trabajadora temporalia para las agencias allá de aquí de New Brunswick.
I'm a tech worker for the agencies here in New Brunswick.
Uh, yo quiero hablarles un poquito de lo que pasa en las agencias. Nosotros, uh, somos trabajadores de ellos hasta el tiempo que ellos nos necesitan, ¿verdad? Pero también nosotros a veces trabajamos con ellos más de años, dos años, y no somos beneficiarios de nada.
We work with the agencies and we work as they need us, but some of us have been with these agencies for one, two years and none of us have ever received any form of benefits or any kind of protections whatsoever from them.
Nosotros no más servimos a ellos como unos trabajadores, como si fuéramos unos objetos. Pero ellos cuando nosotros se trata que nosotros nos enfermamos, ellos no están pendientes y nosotros necesitamos un día de enfermedad. Si estamos enfermos, tenemos nuestros hijos enfermos.
They look at us as workers and objects. They don't, uh, care for us if we're sick. They don't keep that in mind if we need to pay off to care for ourselves or for our children. It's nothing that crosses their mind, it's not important to them.
Cuando uno les pide un día de enfermedad a, a la agencia, dice que uno tiene que hablar con el empleador. El empleador no tiene nada que ver, el, el, perdón, la, la compañía no tiene nada que ver porque el empleador es la agencia y la agencia es la que nos tiene que dar los días.
When you ask the agency for a day off when you're sick, they tell you to ask your employer and, but the employer, where you actually work, is not your employer. The agency is your employer. So, they play you off both of each other and they keep you from getting your sick days.
A veces tenemos momentos que nos llaman de las escuelas que nuestros hijos enferman y necesitamos aunque sea cuatro horas para que nos, nos paguen y tenemos que trabajar otro día cuatro horas más o una hora diaria para poder completar bien trans此刻 de trabajo.
Sometimes you might get a call from school saying that your child is sick and you need to leave work early. Uh, so where you might be able to normally use a sick day there, now you have hours that you have to make up, uh, that week, next week, and you otherwise would not get paid for them.
El año pasado yo estuve embarazada y yo estaba pidiendo a cada momento días de, de permisos para, para ir a las citas y acabaron despidiéndome del trabajo con una excusa que no eran, no eran justas.
Last year, I was pregnant and so I requested days off, uh, for prenatal care. Uh, I was eventually fired because they said that the time off that I was requesting was unjust.
Sí, me sentí triste porque no hay una ley que nos ampare a nosotros como trabajadores. Pero por otra parte sí, no me, no me bajó la moral porque trabajo uno como trabajador encuentra en otro lado. Pero nosotros necesitamos a un, a unas personas como ustedes que nos ayuden, que tengan, que tengan un poquito de misericordia de nosotros, de este pueblo que le habla aquí, que somos padres de familia y necesitamos que ustedes nos apoyen. Ustedes que están ahí sentado en ese lado, queremos que nosotros nos apoyen a nosotros y tengan piedad por nuestros hijos.
And while it hurts and it saddens me that I was let go from my job, uh, I work anyway and because I need to and it's very important that I work. But I hope that you all sitting there, uh, can help this city, can use your power to change that so that we can have earned sick leave and make it better for this town, for the children and for the parents of the children who work in the agencies and in this city.
Pasan holides y nosotros no tenemos derecho a holides. Todo mundo tiene derecho a holides. Nadie, aquí nosotros los temporarios, trabajadores temporarios, no tenemos derecho a holides. No tenemos derecho de días personales, días de enfermedad, vacaciones, nada. Nosotros somos como exclavos.
We don't get any sort of special days, no holidays, no vacation, no sick leave. We're basically slaves in the places that we work.
Yo, uh, me dijo ustedes con respeto por haberme escuchado y yo quisiera que ustedes tomaran en cuenta esas palabras de este pueblo que le habla a ustedes con respeto, pero que ustedes tengan en cuenta que nosotros necesitamos ese apoyo de ustedes.
I thank you all for listening, but I just want to reiterate and reinforce that we really need you to come through for us and help us so that we can get this worker protection that we need.
No queremos que esto quede en el olvido, queremos ser escuchados.
We don't want this to be forgotten, we want to be heard.
Thank you.
All right. So, my name is Rosella Romano, I'm a city. My entire family is here, along with my mom, somewhere in the crowd. Um, I live in New Brunswick, I work in New Brunswick, my children go to New Brunswick. And we support earned sick leave and we hope that this council puts it on the agenda. Um, also, we wanna advocate for all the other residents who live in New Brunswick and who are unable to be here, who are unable to have a voice heard and most importantly, who are unable to have this paid sick leave.
We need action, we need it now. We need it now. My name is Firea Lohalita R and I live in New Brunswick. I go to school in New Brunswick and. And I'm so proud and I have put this in.
Briefly, her name is Dorseti. Her name is Maxley. And I wanna teach my children that being here today not only shows that, you know, they're being activists, but that they're being advocates for the community, they're being advocates for other children who are also here present and most importantly, for them to understand why they're here, why earned paid sick leave is very important not only for the people who are here, but for the rest of the community, for the rest of the people who are in Middlesex County and for those who are, who live in New Jersey.
Thank you. Anyone else? Like to address the council this evening?
Good evening once again, Council Charlie Cradville from New Brunswick. I wanna echo everything that was said tonight. Uh, you've been really dragging your feet on this one and you need to do something about it quick. Uh, is the, uh, do we have a water director? Does the city have a water director?
No, we don't.
No, sir.
The mayor is the water director, right?
He's the acting director, so let me correct myself.
Were you planning at any time to mention the problems at the water utility this weekend during your meeting or that, uh, rise the level of importance to, uh, the water?
Um, the, um, there was a source issue with, uh, water coming from the Farrington Lake. The operators quickly changed the, um, method of filtration from the gravity filters to the membrane filters. There was no violation whatsoever. So, why don't you tell us what you think was, went on at the plant this weekend?
I was told there's actually a chemical feed issue. Were you gonna talk about that? There was a, a chemical feed issue.
Chemical feed issue?
Yeah.
There was, there was an alum pump that failed, uh, for a period of time. The operators, uh, got on top of it, brought a mechanic in and it was repaired. There was no, there was no violation of water quality whatsoever. There, there's obviously an individual who whispers to Mr. Cradville from inside the plant, but, uh, the information that you are, um, putting forth is not entirely accurate.
Thank you. What's inaccurate about it?
He just told you.
Well, I introduced your question, maybe.
Hold on, hold on. This is not a question and answer period. Everything through the chair. This is public comment. This isn't a public question and answer period.
I, forgive me, I did not hear what was inaccurate that I put out there. What, what's inaccurate specifically?
I, I, I take the comment back.
Okay.
Oh, so, so I didn't say anything inaccurate.
Mr. Cradville, we come in peace. Continue, sir.
Here's where I'm going with this.
Okay, please do that.
The gravity filters, that's half the plant, right?
Gravity filters are half the plant?
Yeah.
Is that true?
They, um, there are eight filters. I can't say that exactly, seven NGD goes through the, um, the filters, but it is roughly speaking, half the plant, yes.
And were all of them taken offline?
They were.
Yes.
And for how long were they offline?
I don't know the answer to that.
Don't know the answer, sir.
Can get it for you. All the water, all the water was filtered through the membrane side of the plant, which is one of the, um, advantages of the plant where you have two different ways of filtering your water and cleaning your water.
Thank you.
Right, and so over the weekend, uh, half the plant was down for an indeterminate amount of time. Uh, did the mayor slash acting water director arrive on the scene? Did he come in?
We don't know that answer. Does anybody know that answer?
I do not.
We don't know that answer, sir.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lockland has a city vehicle. He's paid, uh, $15,000 extra to supervise the water utility. Did Mr. Lockland drive that city vehicle and come to the water utility to check out what was wrong when half the plant was down over the weekend?
Just yes or no answers for him.
No, I did not.
Thank you.
Uh, there's a water treatment plant superintendent paid $95,000. Uh, he was demoted from the position of water director after he used a racial slur on the job. Uh, can you tell me, does he have a city vehicle that he gets to take home with him?
He does.
Yes, he does.
Did he drive that city vehicle to the water treatment plant to see what was wrong with the plant where he's the superintendent over the weekend?
I don't know that answer. Does anybody know that answer?
I don't believe he did, but he was on the phone with the operators numerous times during the event that we're speaking of.
But did show physically what was on the phone.
So, why did we give him that city car?
Why did we give him the city car?
Yeah, why is he gonna take home a city vehicle paid for by the people of New Brunswick? He's not gonna drive it in when half the water plant is offline.
Half, the, half of the, um, filtration piece may have been offline, but we were producing 100% of the water needs for the community.
Thank you.
So, why did we give him a city car?
Why did we give him the city car? Why did we give him the city car, Mr. Lockland?
Uh, the decision we made when we, uh, retained him, he is the water treatment plant superintendent. We still offer him the, the use of a city vehicle. He responds to, um, water main breaks, problems at the plant. This weekend, as far as I know, he did not respond in person, but was on the phone numerous times coaching people through the process.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, I brought up problems with the water utility and I was told that, you know, mistakes happen and, you know, people get punished for their mistakes. Uh, there was a person who was accused of falsifying records for three years, lying to the people, lying to the state about the quality of the water, not telling people when their water should have been boiled. This person who endangered the public, uh, is he still a city employee, Edward O'Rourke?
Is Edward O'Rourke still an employee, sir? He's an employee suspended without pay, continuous since the.
Employee suspended without pay, Mr. Cradville.
So, when you say he's punished, what is his punishment?
I said he's punished.
At the last meeting, you said people who are responsible get held responsible, they're punished. We're here more than a year after this. The man's still on the payroll. He hasn't even had his.
He's not on the payroll. What, what are you not listening to?
He's on, and he's had the potential to return to the payroll. He's a city employee.
Well, his punishment is being suspended without pay. You say that's his punishment.
And when is the city gonna terminate this employee? What's holding this up?
Mr. Lockland?
We have been, uh, waiting the, uh, action by the DDP that was taking, uh, action against him personally. I don't believe that has, uh, completed itself. The process has completed itself. If it had, we would have been notified. If it had, we would have been notified. He remains in a suspended without pay status. He is not earning a nickel since the day he was suspended. That's his penalty at the moment. There may be something, unfortunately for him, maybe bigger and better down the road, but the current penalty is he's not earning a wage.
Thank you.
Well, I apologize for misspeaking and saying he's still in the payroll. I didn't mean that he's being paid, but I do believe that something that Sir Lockland just said is false. The DDP has issued a fine, has paid the fine, the matter's been resolved. Why isn't the city proceeding with their efforts to terminate him?
He just said the city has not been formally notified it has been resolved. He's waiting for the proper paperwork, I believe. I'm going to speak for you, Mr. Lockland.
I have not been notified that the state has concluded its action against Mr. O'Rourke.
The city has not been notified, sir.
Okay, I'll move on, only because of the improper limits on time here. I want to ask, is there anything for people in the city government who feel they've been discriminated against? Is there any avenue for them to challenge workplace discrimination?
Do we have anything in place?
Yes, there's... Union employees, of course, can seek some response through agreements with their collective bargaining groups. Management employees can come to make directly. There are... a hearing is always offered to an individual who feels they've been treated poorly in the workplace. So yes, there is opportunity.
So no one's been turned away?
He didn't say that. He said you asked a question.
Right now, let me ask me another question.
Has anybody ever been turned away?
Yeah.
Has anybody ever been turned away?
Turned away from what?
Turned away from what, sir?
Workplace discrimination complaint.
Filing discrimination complaints, has anybody ever been turned away?
I have never discouraged anyone from filing a...
Yeah, so time's still running.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I've never discouraged anyone from filing a complaint whatsoever. I don't know what he's speaking of.
Okay.
I'll move on. Thank you for that. The community liaison, what does she do now that the internal affairs hearing review process has been abolished?
Mr. Shammy, it's my understanding that the hearing process was for a specifically defined time, as Mr. Cradville is well aware. The community liaison still serves as the community liaison if there are people who feel aggrieved relative to issues that deal with the New Brunswick Police Department. So she's still serving in that capacity, but the hearing process had dealt with that specified period of time when Mr. Rowe was an IA officer. That, I understand, I wonder if this...
Thank you. I heard a lot of things, but not the answer to my question. What does the community liaison do now that the hearing process is open?
Available for people to come meet with her. That'd be their pleasure.
Will she meet with me?
Will she meet with you?
I suspect that Mr. Cradville has a complaint regarding the police department or something that wasn't addressed by IA. I suppose she would. But she's not in that capacity to provide interviews for Mr. Cradville to conduct the recording business.
Okay.
Not that you're referring to.
Now, if I have a legitimate complaint, I can... she'll meet with me.
I suspect she will, but she will if she has a legitimate complaint.
She's here. Can we ask her? Will she meet with me if I have a legitimate complaint?
If he has a legitimate complaint, why don't you just talk to her after?
I want the people to see what her answer is.
I'm not gonna...
Okay. Well, let me tell you how I really feel.
Please do.
I can't wait. I think it's a joke. I think it's an absolute joke that the hearing process was abolished, not replaced, not improved, and this person still is in a position to make money when there's no real purpose for her job.
What are you talking about? You did an interview with the mayor. Why didn't you tell him that? I heard the interview. You didn't say any of those things to the mayor. No, you didn't.
We had a time limit. I spoke to him for ten minutes about the issue and quite frankly, I think that's more time than you spent talking to him about it. Because you don't care about this issue, you don't care about it. And quite frankly, you're not a man of your word. You're not a man of your word. At the last meeting, you said...
I said I'm in favor of it.
I said, "Will you make sure that they don't take it away?" And no, did you say you'll try or did you say you will?
I will. I tried.
Did you try?
I did try.
What'd you do?
I talked to that little about it. I talked to...
And he told you this is how it's going to be. You said, "Okay."
That's not what happened.
We had a good laugh.
I explained myself. I say I still believe, I have no problem with people listening to police scanners. Okay, this is the police... I spoke to the police department. The state police does it, Rutgers police does it. They want to move in that direction. And they told me the reason why and they convinced me why it was a good thing for the police department.
So you changed your position. You broke your promise.
No, I didn't say that. I said I would try and try to do it, Mr. Cradville. I still believe the way I feel.
All right, I wasn't going to do this, but I'm going to draw your attention to a person who was issued a summons this morning on Mine Street. On Mine Street, two men were observed dragging garbage bags into the middle of the street, dragging a picnic bench into the middle of the street, dragging a big heavy metal garbage can into the middle of the street. Both of them were issued summonses. One of them is named Nabil Rokeria and he is a Democratic committee man representing Board Six, District Four for the New Brunswick Democrat Organization run by Mr. Shammy, the attorney. And he is on the ballot for the June second election. Is the Democratic Party aware of this? Do you have any response to this? And are these the types of people that you want to see in positions of power in your party, Mr. Council President?
Your time is up, but I'll answer your question. I don't know anything about what you're speaking about. I'm just hearing it for the first time from you, so I can't respond to something that I haven't heard about yet. Thank you.
Please look into it and it was disgraceful what you did earlier tonight. I hope to never see it happen again, Gary. It's very good.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else who's interested, council?
Buenas noches.
Good evening. I just asked for two minutes of your time. I can't add too much to what my neighbors and fellow residents already said, but I just want to say something that's important for me and for some other mothers in my situation. A situation that is very important for myself and for other mothers and shows the need for paid sick days. I'm not sure if... I'm sure you're all familiar with autism, prevalence of autism these days. You may have family members who are affected by autism. And there are a lot of women in my situation. It's not that we don't want to work, but we're prevented from working because of this condition of our children, autism. And this means that without paid sick days, a lot of mothers in my situation can't work, but if you approve this law, this proposal, mothers like myself would be able to work more frequently because we would know that we'd have a few days if there were emergency, if something happened to our children, we could take that day off without fear. And she says autism, if you don't know, doesn't just come, someone comes with a lot of complications. For example, her son suffers from allergies, exaggerated allergies because of the condition. And we just asked that you put your hand to your heart and you really consider and think about this proposal. Think about the mothers and children and the effects. And if you don't do it for the adults, do it for the children. Thank you for your attention.
Anthony, Ray, and Dino, Dick Street. I'm with Rutgers University, Black Lives Matter. At first, I'd like to say this personally. I support the paid sick leave programs and I think you guys really should get on the ball on that. First, I'd like to say, I'd like to address your objection, Council President Egan, to Mrs. Whit, your first objection. It strikes me of that of a child throwing a temper tantrum. Like, "I can't have it, or I didn't get it, so nobody should get it."
How can you say that?
I mean, what was your objection then?
Listen, we're going to sit here and tell each other how we strike each other. We're not going to get along at all. Okay, I just gave you why she asked me why we're waiting and I'm having trouble thinking about it because of my life and my workers don't get paid sick leave.
Well, I think the argument should be that they should get paid sick leave.
I'm facing, I think it's a great idea, okay? I didn't say either way. I'm just telling you my... The lady asked me a question, I gave her an answer. But nobody likes the answer. I saw one guy go boo-boo when my kids didn't get what I worked and my kid rewarded and I didn't get paid from the audience, you know? So listen, don't try to sit here and have premonitions about me.
Okay, I'm just saying, that seemed very unprofessional.
Excuse me?
It seemed unprofessional. It did not seem like a professional objection.
Know what it seemed like? It seemed like an honest answer, Dave.
Okay, fine.
That's what it seemed like.
All right.
Isn't that what we wanted?
Well, I'm getting you an honest response.
We were just called criminals before, so I'm trying to give an honest... I'm trying to get out of that criminal suit and into being a more honest...
I don't know why you're coming at me for this.
Well, you were coming at me and you just told me I was unprofessional.
Oh, no, I said you're common.
Same thing?
No, it's not the same thing.
He did, sir.
I know that the police department is considering body cameras. I would just like to know if you could ask Captain Miller what kind of things are weighing when...
Captain Miller, can you tell us about body cameras?
We're exploring that in the news all the time. Right now, it's a hot topic. We are exploring the use of body cameras. We are in favor of putting all our officers with body cameras. The issues that we're dealing with right now is the cost. It's the cost of the camera along with all the backend software, hardware that goes with it, including servers, storage devices, and the maintenance of it. There's also some issues with privacy and protecting the public and victims who would be recorded as well. And we're waiting for some guidance from the prosecutor's office and the Attorney General. I have it to be addressed.
I'd just like to say, first of all, that I support the body cameras, but I don't think it's a solution. I think it's a step towards solving some of the problems we have with, I guess, trust issues between the community and police department. I've already addressed you guys about it. I just want to remind you of my email address, a n t r i o a n c h at scarletmail dot ruckers dot edu. I'd like you guys to contact me. I've written an ordinance based off of other ordinances in other municipalities. I've done research. I know Mr. Shammy was concerned about some of the research. I've done it and I'd like to share it with you guys. So if you could reach out to me, that would be fantastic. I also just have one more question for Mr. Miller. Just, I was wondering, yeah, what kind of equipment does the police department receive through the 1033 program?
Well, I think you said before you received vehicles and other type of... Captain Miller, what about the things that you received from the...
We addressed this at the meeting, so I went through the whole list. I can't recall everything off the top of my head. We've received a truck, some light towers for using at night during accident scenes, some generators to support another situation like Hurricane Sandy when we lost power, a water pump, computers, and some computer-based operations.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night. Anybody else who's interested, council? Seeing done?
Motion.
Go for it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Clemming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.